Well, welcome everybody to this workshop for May first, you believe it, already a third of the way through the year. So, um, it is currently about five or ten minutes after two, about ten after. Um, so let's just dive in. First, we have any public commenters, Mr. Alan Lyle, you're up, my friend.
Thank you, sir.
Are you friend or foe today?
Uh, I'm just there. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. There's in the comments, it's supposed to be about something on the agenda. I hope she's gonna talk about the property taxes that's on the state, and that's what I want to talk to you about. This on my property tax assessment. A homestead property, the assessed value increases 10% every, every year by mandate until it reaches the market value. Now, I know we always talk about when actually taxes come out, old people and homestead people don't pay additional taxes. Eh, we do because of the assessed value. And so keep that in mind when it comes time for figuring out, talking about property taxes, that even though I have an old person and I have a homestead, I still end up with my property taxes going up and up every year because of the assessed value.
Tracy?
Should not be.
City of Temple taxes on somebody over sixty-five. I would not swear it's this city too.
So the part, for, 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 in particular, the half that has a homestead in, and half of the duplex, but the half of the duplex is an investment property for him. So the half that is his homestead.
Right.
It is a fix, it does not go up, but the half that's an investment, which you don't get over sixty-five or homestead protection. So that's why Mr. Lidle in particular sees it increases because while he lives in the unit, he rents out half of it.
Oh, he does.
Well, they, he, you can only live in one.
You're a poor investor.
That should be done, and moving into that outside of council.
If you don't rent it out, maybe you could go visit John and Brian and figure out if you can put a door somewhere and then get it made a single family. But, so maybe that's what you need to do is cut it and get it back to a single family, so it's not considered two women.
Yeah, I've talked about it and I've talked to Phil Kelly, getting it back to single families, going through the planning and zoning and getting it rezoned, you know. It's just not, it's just not really fun to play with.
It doesn't have to, you'll have to.
You know, just in terms of a single family, a single family dwelling is allowed in two F. So wouldn't have to rezone it to physically change it, give documentation to uh, appraisal district that had it, this is.
Maybe I need to revisit this. The last time I visited you with this, apparently it was not something I could do in the duplex.
Yeah.
We'll doodle on it with you if you want to.
We talk about a lot of things, Mr. Lidle, all that being one.
Or rent it out and you'll make more money. There are full solutions here. Thank you for the offer.
You may.
You're welcome.
We'll, we'll talk replating is something that okay, you, you probably wanted to do, the appraisal district would look for, we wouldn't require, but they might look for that to be able to say this is single family.
I've been lost in front of the appraisal district.
Me too.
Quite appointed with them for protesting this year for the same kind of great thing. Wanted to make you aware that we talk about old people in homestead. Still, even though maybe City of Temple stays the same, everybody else doesn't.
Yeah, that was my next question.
You don't have. Yeah.
They, they have a cap on their free, they don't, uh, do it, so.
Go to their meetings and tell them City of Temple has.
They might do. Thanks, guys.
You bet. Good to see you, Alan.
Good to see you.
With that said, for the public commenters, we'll move on to item two, which is discussed in your regular meeting agenda items for the meeting posted tonight. So, uh, council and or staff, anything on the, uh, consent or regular? Nothing?
Just item six and seven.
Okay.
Regular agenda.
Yes, sir.
All right, and so the, the one that will take a little bit of time, you're just say, the seventy forty Brookside Boulevard, Red Oak Development out of Austin, Tom Staub, the CEO, is here, he also spoke at P and Z, uh, they are looking at potentially, you know, the, the intending to request a tabling because, and I'll tell you why, because the super majority would be triggered because of some neighborhood opposition and, and kind of an unusual circumstance, I'll show you on a slide. But that triggers the super majority and of course, and so Mr. Staub understands that with four out of five.
Yeah.
Uh, it would have to be majority, and so as an investor, he's evaluated or is trying to evaluate whether to request to postpone. Um, so, any feedback, I'm, I'm sure would be appreciated, and I know he, he would like to speak as well. I have the abbreviated presentation. There we go. Yes, thank you, Mr. Lyle. Uh, so this is the site, Lightner, this was a planned development from twenty twenty-two. Uh, to the right, of course, you can see the total plan development. This is along Prairie View, of course, this is across from Crossroads, this is a key location. The, uh, the single family residential is under development now. I think purchased by WB, I believe D R Horton is building those homes. And so of course you can see in the aerial, this is a very recent aerial that dirt work in the proposed amendment area, the, the retail that was approved, but that's all really cut to be able to use that dirt for the residential side. So, um, so just kind of cleaning up the site, but it's, the amendment is really just about that northeast corner of the property. And so this is, this is what they're requesting, uh, as you all may recall, general retail was approved here, and so I think after a couple of years of marketing the property and just evaluating it, they decided that having small warehouse offices with keeping retail along Airport and Lightner, that that would make sense for them as, as investors and, and owners of this property. And so we've been working with them, you know, his engineer, his architect for a while now to tweak this, getting, you know, feedback from, you know, Brennan, her team along the way in terms of, hey, Lightner Lane, how do we address this? So Lightner, they, they've agreed they would have to improve all of Lightner, ju- not just the section adjacent to, uh, the warehouse office if approved, but the entire section. And so that, that includes this portion here, which is shown in the plan development as future multifamily, to my knowledge, and I think Mr. Staub has indicated, they don't have a multifamily developer at this time, but, so that's just to give you a heads up. And so all the square footages, I mean, these are, they're smaller warehouse office, um, buildings, you know, you, you see the access along Brookside, two access points there, uh, you know, they, we, we've all looked at and the potential to connect to Airport within this property. And understandably, text, uh, they don't meet text dot standards to be able to have a driveway that close to Lightner. And so what we've worked with is to be able to at least provide a street projection where that would be a private drive with a, a projection so that future, uh, commercial development and the tract to the north that there could be shared cross access and then in connection to the airport. And so here is, here's some renderings of what, uh, the retail, but also the warehouse office would look like. Um, I'll, I'll leave some of that to Mr. Staub just to describe, but, but we've worked with the architect to be able to, uh, ensure that these would not just be metal buildings with no articulation. And so here is the, uh, the interesting situation that, uh, the other, all the residential properties that were, that Red Oak sold to WB, well, they responded so that, you know, still is either WB or D R Horton. I apologize, I can't remember exactly which one, but either way, whoever owns those properties now responded in disapproval. And I don't know if y'all had conversations with them or.
No, I mean, it's, it's the, uh, I think D R Horton, so it's, it's to be expected. They're big behemoths.
Okay. So yes, that's the super majority. So of course, it's four out of four, not three out of four. Yes, yes, I'm no math whiz, but I didn't, we didn't have to map that, I'd be able to say, hey, we need four, four out of four.
Yeah.
With, um, the current vacancy at, at council. And so just a variety of conditions that once again, they have agreed to, uh, and, you know, just, uh, won't go into a lot of detail on those now unless you'd like me to, but I, I want to give him some time to, uh, to supplement. You know, we're, we're evaluating kind of the nuts and bolts and the, um, the mechanics. Um, and, and of course, they, they've done some additional analysis in their due diligence in terms of economic impact, et cetera.
On, on your first slide, did you show, um, how many acres did this development actually?
This is, this is ten.
Okay.
Or ten and, or just under ten.
Ten point seven.
Ten point seven, so sorry, yes. Over ten, not under, ten point seven, thank you.
And then the, the D R Horton looks like maybe two and a half times that size, three times that size.
Forty-nine acres.
Okay. Yeah, five times this size.
That's correct. And so once again, the light blue, those would be retail warehouse office to the rear. It's been through multiple DRCs, you know, to even just make sure that solid waste has been addressed. So Assistant Director of Solid Waste, James Laramore, you know, great addition to, to our team, by the way. Uh, he's been awesome during DRC processes, but just to evaluate to say, hey, this, this would meet our standards. All right, so despite the neighbor opposition, uh, P and Z voted six to zero uh, for the development per staff recommendation. And I'll come back to that if, I don't know if if there was, Mr. Staub, there were any slides that you wanted to address?
There's a few, and by the way, it was kind of appeared to be a five of all, but you don't mind.
Sure.
Tell the story a little bit. I'm Tom Staub, CEO of Development Group, um, a little about, a little bit about who we are. We, we primarily develop in Texas and Arizona. Um, we tend to buy about five hundred acres or above, build true misuse communities. Uh, to date, we have about four thousand home, home lots across this area of Texas. Um, we have dedicated three school sites, uh, two medical campuses, and about sixty acres of commercial use also are, uh, for the projects. And I think one takeaway with what we do and what we're very proud of in these, for all our products, and we're happy to share our portfolio with you. We take a lot of pride in what we build. You, you'll never find anything of low quality process in these four projects. And so, um, this is one that we are also proud of, and we think is very unique to, to the region in terms of design and quality. Uh, and by the way, I, I came to learn about Temple back in twenty eighteen, when I met my wife and, I mean, she's part of Fort Hood back then. Um, so now out of Austin, but I spent a lot of time in Clean Harker Heights and Temple, and, um, I found this piece of property back then, and we loved it. And, um, here we are, thanks. Um, so I'm an architect, this is where he was supposed to speak, but I will tell you what I told him in his smart plan. I said, Mark, I don't want to have a traditional retail strip mall, I don't want to have a, you know, office warehouse, that's, you know, metal siding. How can we, we be different without breaking the budget? And so one thing that you'll see across our buildings is this concept of pushing and pulling on every unit. Uh, contrast of colors, materials, and, and things that really separate every unit so that you don't have this uniformity across all the units. Right? So that's where, where we started. Some of the materials are, they are metal such as this, but the colors will be different from your typical gray. Um, we leaned away from stucco and masonry because frankly, it's antiquated, it's from the nineties. There's a lot of cool things you can do with new materials to make it pop and will be even more attractive. Uh, for example, if you look here, instead of masonry, we have this really unique, uh, wood called thermally modified wood, um, which is, it's, it's treated under high pressure and high heat, and it extracts out all the sugar. And what that does, any pest or bugs, they go to this wood and there's, there's nothing there to eat. So it lasts a long time, it looks really nice. Um, this is, this is a, a very, you know, high quality A-class material that'll differentiate retail from old gas station retail. Um, some other elements that we are investing in heavily is I definitely did not want a sign that sits by itself with this little, you know, white law in the dark sign, uh, we are putting the, some money into the sign to be attached to the building. And again, as you can see, there's a differentiation between how we're doing that, um, making it really cohesive with everything else. Um, landscape as well, a lot of developers and retail don't spend a lot of money in, in landscape. I will tell you across all our projects, we usually more than double the, uh, the average. Um, and this one, our budget alone is about a million dollars, just landscapes. Okay. Um, I thought it'd be important to talk about job creation and have an updated slide, Brian, I can share later, but um, basically with these kind of projects, there's three kinds of jobs that are created. There's the direct jobs, the, the jobs that are created from the community that will stay there. There are the indirect jobs, the jobs that help support the development, right? So people who are doing the work, the, the woodwork, the concrete, then there's the job to support the jobs. The ones that are for restaurants in, in the Starbucks that will have higher demand because of this, this site. So, um, over the, over the project, we estimate roughly two hundred permanent jobs will be created from this location, which your data center down the street, the one for Facebook, has about the same amount of jobs created. This is, just to put it in context. Um, one thing I do with all my council meetings and county meetings is I'm very transparent with numbers. So what you'll see is what we're spending here on the project, this does not include inflation or cost escalation. Um, three phases will build retail in phase one, which I think was one of the promises that we had to make, which we're definitely okay doing. Um, but over the project life, we'll spend about sixteen million dollars on this site. Uh, about ten percent of that goes to Lightner. And so we, that, that concession that we made was a big one. Um, and so yes, ten percent of the budget will go to the improvement of Lightner Lane, which is obviously a direct impact for.
Does the full from Airport?
The parade.
Wow.
That's also on G P days. Um, Brian, is it worth talking about the importance of that connection with current traffic jam that has been able to mediate?
That's, I touch on it briefly, I mean, certainly in terms of that, that will be an important piece for circulation. And, uh, and y'all would, y'all be responsible for it, correct?
Yep. With the stones down. Um, and then just going back to what Brian said earlier, we, we initially didn't have plans to buy this property from other, or other ownership and then develop it. Uh, we had it on market through a variety of brokers. And what we heard from time to time again from other developers and our partners is that there's far too many gas stations in the area. There's far too much old retail, it's just too saturated to really take this on. So we had to think about, okay, well, what, what's not in the area? Um, and we thought there was a lack of unique and high quality retail. So what we did is we bought the property and we are, are working to develop a, a use that is not in the market curve. Okay, so this is ideal for a gas station, but there's three quick trips within a one mile radius. So that pretty much completes any possibility of that. Um, strip retail, I think, is the bane of my existence, I sold this, and so we're not doing that. Um, what we're doing is bringing a different product that is not here in Temple that we think will do well. Um, traffic, I'm not an engineer, so I will not touch on it too much, but, um, all the roads have been sized to address any sort of truck, um, demand, whether it's a freight truck or a UPS style truck. This community primarily will be catering towards the FedEx, the UPS sized truck, not your freight truck. These are two and a half thousand square foot units, they're not your Bay Bay with, you know, truck or trailer units. So with that said, that's pretty much all I had to present. Any questions or thoughts or?
Can you share with us, um, what the warehouse and, I mean, the retail, the, the right, the warehouse, would that have that same mix of content?
Yes, yeah, so there's to the upper left.
That's one of the warehouses.
Yeah, and like, just small things, right? It was the little orange divider. Typically, a developer would just ignore that. No, no, it's not the cheapest thing in the world, but that little contrast makes it, uh, separates each of the units.
You're calling that the yard, so that's your storage.
Yeah, some of these people like to have some source things for the windows or, you know, these are primarily contractors who use the storage for an office. You know, plumbers, electricians, um, that's your typical tenant.
Then your UPS is delivering in the front, I know just a hook in the back. It's hard.
Yeah.
End of your buildings right at the parking or street, I'm trying to say, do you go back to that one?
This one.
Yeah, well, I guess you have a little bit of strip between the back of the building and the street itself. So no, no delivery back there.
And we have centralized building zones, we're not gonna have the big freight trucks coming in.
The dark gray or loading zones.
Yeah.
Okay.
Important too, maybe to briefly, our, our thoughts around phasing this is to start from this going towards those, so this will be the first development phase, and then essentially second, and then third.
What kind of buffer do you have next to the residential, I think, just trees, would there also be some type of fencing? Yeah.
It's a, yeah, it's a wall, so there, so the, the code for warehouse office requires a twenty-foot um, upper with landscaping, and so the there's a, the drainage, uh, channel to the west, it's at a hundred-foot drainage channel. But either way, you know, that, that is there as well, so just to kind of supplement that buffer. But yeah, it'll, it'll include, and that's a condition, Christina is actually the case manager, she, she knows this project better than I do, but in terms of uh, the, the wall, I think it's not surprising, masonry wall.
There is a masonry wall requirement, and then there is the drainage corridor that acts as a natural buffer. And then they are providing a landscape buffer that varies between five and thirteen feet, that'll include, um, shrubs and trees. And those are single story?
Is it?
On that edge, will they all be single story?
All of them are single story.
They are exceeding our landscape requirements, uh, minimum landscape requirements is five percent, and they're providing that's nine point nine, so basically no need for landscape requirement. And lighting would be, you know, shield of residence.
Anything other questions for Mr. Staub?
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Of course.
You did it.
I think that, um, on further discussion, that I am going to recommend, go ahead and table this for now. And, um, I don't know if we'll be able to meet you, meet your June twenty-sixth request. Is there, do you, do you have a, uh, like a really hard timeline for financing?
Uh, yeah, always, um.
In theory, you're going to.
In theory, um, yeah, I would say that is, you know, just transparently, as long as we have you know, plan approval by the huge board this year to break around, aren't you?
Okay, I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah, yeah.
So we just kind of have some internal stuff that we need to take care of, and it's not specific to your project, it's just stuff that we need to get going.
For June, I'm, I'm gone on the fifth, and you're gone on the twenty-sixth, so.
So you're gonna have a hard time. And there won't even be a super majority here.
You can't hear it with three council members.
Yeah. So we, we are gonna delay it till July, but, but once we hit July, I'm saying we're gonna delay till, it, it appears the way things are working out, we'll need to delay this project to July. Um, but then we have, then, then we need to, we need to have that, another person on by then, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just plan on that, okay? Well, June twenty-sixth is out, as soon as we can, back to that, we'll get on. Okay?
Date to be determined.
Yeah. Yes.
That's, I'm not pervert, David.
Yes.
All right, the other case that we have, this is actually, uh, John McGowan, our, uh, new. Five months.
He was like a baby.
Yeah. So. So this is unlike the last case, which has, is complicated in a lot of ways, this is very simple. This is just a simple code amendment to align our chapter ten, our electrical code with state law. And so, John, you've got, uh, you've got probably more slides in the intro and the questions than the body practically. This is, this is the meat of it, uh, it, this is to, uh, to adopt what, um, TDLR is already required at the state level. And that is, uh, for implementation, the twenty twenty-three National Electrical Code, which we're already inspecting to that, I, I believe our builders are already suited for that, it's just a matter of making that change in our code, clean it up. So. That's.
Have you?
I mean, any, any questions for John?
Yeah. Y'all already been enforcing it the, the new ways.
So how, yeah, so how I actually kind, I, I actually came about is, it, it was a bit of confusion between inspectors and some of the contractors out there, and a question came to me that this guy who like, saying we need to put these plugs in this island, this is what the code is. He said, no, that's not, because my license is for the most current code. And that started me going, oh, okay, let's look into this. So actually in twenty-three, the state mandated that TDLR, who were over all the electricians, that they are licensed to the most current code, and any electrical systems that they put in residential or commissional needs to be to twenty-three. So we went, oh, okay, we're kind of looking at this, we're kind of, uh, you know, we're kind of looking at it in the wrong way. So that's kind of where we ended up, saying, okay, well, let's, let's line up with, let's all get in sync, because we were kind of out of sync, and that's really kind of what we're trying to do, so.
So is the twenty-three code the, the one that's most recently adopted?
Yes, sir.
For enforcement right now? Is, is there a twenty-four, twenty-five code out there yet?
Not right.
Okay.
Like they only do one every three.
Seventy, yeah, seventy-three years.
I think, I don't know. Traditionally, we, we adopt one code behind, is that true?
Uh, I think electrical has always been, I think, current mandate had to be the current one.
Because they're licensing to the most updated code.
I think it's just American.
And, and right now, seventeen, so we're kind of two, about two, the United.
Yeah. So that's, that's IBC, right?
The IBC, we're actually three behind, and we're gonna address that, uh, probably in the next few months, we hope, right?
Yeah, that's, that's on John's work plan is to, uh, to work, work for the building community to update the overall international residential code, international building code to make, we're, we're talking about, but that's a hypothesis of, hey, two, twenty-twenty-one makes a lot of sense for overall update, this is just like very specific, God, and, you know, we're, we're, we're not in line with state law.
Well, that was always, because the, I know that the, my belief is that it used to be stated that the reason that they kind of stayed behind on IBC now, I, I already it's because a lot of times when a new code comes out, the products aren't readily available. Um, if you give it two, three years, the rest of the country is all doing it, and that product is now reasonably priced and readily available, and it's the reason we don't want want to adopt it as soon as they come out.
Exactly, building codes, we don't want to be on the front end, there may be some other codes, but let others figure some of that out.
And as you get into a couple of cycles down there, you know, get a year or two into that new code, it's a kind of you know, if you kind of tweak things, you tweak language, and sometimes they're not clear. You know, they kind of like think they're going in there to clean up some language, and suddenly it's like, that doesn't make no sense. So, you know, kind of, if you, you know, if you bring in a, a, a new code, get it there, you know, eighteen months after that new code comes out or so, and then go, okay, now everyone's kind of wiped it out, if that makes sense, you know what I mean?
So, yeah. I remember as, yeah, a bathtub valve one time that came out in a code, and if you could get it, it was like five hundred dollars. Three years later, you could get it, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
And does the state drive, um, the requirement behind which code has to be adopted by cities? Other way, who, who, who drives the adoption?
It's for the, for, uh, TDLR under the state, it's just the electrical code. And like the state code has like a basic standard, but they're like years behind, so they don't kind of push that, for what I believe, so. So it's only really the state with the electrical code that pushes this to, to get to the most coverage. But like, I've done a bit of digging, and you. But, like, I've done a bit of digging in the new code, it makes a lot of sense, there's a lot of more safety regulations in there, and they're kind of updating it for all this new solar and EV. Um, electric vehicles and all that, they brought a lot of new stuff in for all that now, which is, you know, quite commonplace, which five years it kind of wasn't, or three, two. Three to five years ago, it wasn't common, but now they've kind of caught up with all that, so, yeah.
The insurance service rating can get affected if you get too far behind.
Makes sense.
Can't remember if it's five or ten years behind, you get in trouble, not in trouble, but you, you start.
Your ratings are off.
Yes, nine of those three years.
Have to consider that as well.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense. All right. Anything else, Countful? Thanks, Mr. Chandler. All right, we'll move on to our next item, which, all ready? Uh, we're gonna receive a presentation from Temple Health and Bioscience District on the Blue Zone Ignite Temple Niche.
Thanks, everybody. My name is Michael Norman. For those of you I don't know, um, I grew up in Temple, moved back here twenty-one years ago, raised my family here. Uh, and I'm currently the Chair of the Temple Health and Bioscience District. Um, for, for those of you not really aware of what THBD is, or a special economic development district that was created around two thousand. Um, and, uh, the, the district boundaries conform to the city of Temple boundaries. So, so really, we're concerned with the city of Temple, although that now, as we all, you know, it's a sort of a. Expanding mandate in terms of the health and wellness of the healthcare community in the area and the health of. You know, citizens of Temple who live here and work here. So, we've, we've gone through a strategic planning process in the last five years to really ask, what, what's our mission and mandate? And so, we, uh, it's kind of real time as we start to share these, these, um, points, I'll read this to you. We're, we're dedicated to advancing the health and well-being of Temple by fostering economic growth, innovation, and talent development. So that's really our, our sort of missional direction. And so we've, uh, over the past two years, created a really close relationship with TDC. And so alongside the city, TDC, THBD is now a partner in driving economic development. Uh, for, for the city and for our citizens. Um, in that strategic planning process, one of the recommendations that came out of a study we commissioned with Newmark Knight Frank. Uh, was to consider initiatives that would improve the health of the citizens of Temple. And, uh, in, in that recommendation was a consideration for the Blue Zones Initiative. And the Blue Zones, as, as Margaret's going to tell you, is internationally recognized. Planning and process implementation that is data-driven to produce improved well-being in community. And, uh, there's lots of, of detail there that she's going to share with you guys. Um, but from a THBD perspective, we see this as a potential initiative that could, could be core to our mission and core to driving. A healthier, uh, and, and better community for our people. Um, the process we've gone through is multi-phased, and so what THBD did was fund an assessment. Um, process, the, at the beginning of the assessment process. And so, many of you may have attended a keynote speech that was given a few weeks ago, or participated in. Um, group discussions or, or specific discussions around the Blue Zones coming and getting acquainted with our community. And understanding, um, as much as they could about, uh, our community. The outcome of that will be a report that they issue that will be shared with, with our, our steering committee and, and community members. That encompass recommendations about what could be implemented in a full-scale plan. The full-scale plan is a multi-year, multimillion-dollar project that, uh, isn't. Isn't just, you know, you know, certification, it's, it's work that the community would engage in. Um, one thing to note is, it's, it's not a city-funded activity, so we're not here to ask you to participate. From a budget perspective, but obviously, success is dependent on stakeholders in the community thinking this is a good idea. And being willing to put time and energy to, to making it happen. So, the process we've gone through has really been about acquainting stakeholders with the Blue Zones concept. What's possible, what's possible specifically in Temple. And so, we wanted to do this today so that, uh, everyone here could get a view on what does that look like? For, uh, in practice, what are we really talking about? So Margaret is here to present to us what, uh, she is, uh, can introduce her, her title, but she's with Blue Zones. And she's here to really walk you through, um, presentation to educate you on what we're talking about as an initiative.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you all for making time on your agenda today. I'm gonna plug in, so you don't lose connectivity, um, halfway through. Um, I am the Vice President of Blue Zones. I work in partnership with communities all over the country. Um, as they come forward and say they'd like to see what Blue Zones is all about, um, I think it's important to note. Blue Zones is not coming to you and saying, hey, we think you're right for Blue Zone, it's very much, uh, typically happens organically. Through the way that Michael described, I've never had someone write it in a strategic plan, um, that they, they should consider Blue Zone. That's really great feather in our cap. Um, many of you may have seen the Netflix series that came out last year. Uh, I can tell you that was a feather in our cap, because we've been doing this work for more than ten years. And it's kind of like nobody knew about it, um, no one really, they maybe have seen the National Geographic article, or maybe they've seen some of the books that have been published by Dan Buettner. But they really didn't know that we had a community-facing arm of business that was partnering with communities across the US. Uh, to kind of change and transform with especially a lens on health and well-being. So I'm gonna walk you through a few slides, um, but I want to also, um, save as much time for questions at the end as I can. And I've, I've reduced this size quite a bit, there's so much to share in terms of data and how we measure our projects, but I'm really gonna try to stick to some of the just. The basics on our model. Um, so really, with the, the evolution of Blue Zones and what, and where we came from, started with research from Dan Buettner Senior. He was a, a National Geographic Fellow, who was tagged by National Geographic, um, to create a research project. And that was going about finding the areas in the world where people lived longest. It wasn't by accident, um, that they were looking for longest-lived populations, they actually were playing off of this concept of the zip code effect. That environment, actually anywhere between seventy and eighty percent of your environment is actually predicting your longevity and your wellness. Over the, your lifespan, and so if that's true, if environment is that, environmental things, including things like. Your built environment, including environment, your access to healthcare is essential resources. If that's true, then where in the world are people living extra-long lives? And so these five areas on the map are places in the world where people live to age one hundred, late nineties, age one hundred. About ten times the rate that we do across America, except for the, uh, well, Melinda's got us, he's outpacing the rest of America. Uh, uh, and they have twelve more good years, twelve more healthy, active years than we do here in the US. So that means, um, you need hits to age sixty-five and you retire, you're gonna expect to still have, uh, a considerable long life. You might call that phase three of life, um, ahead of you. Uh, and so what is the commonalities of these communities? We look at, um, again, going back to if environment is the core to what's contributing to extra-long life. What is in the environment of these longest-lived communities that are, um, producing these centenarians? Uh, and what they learned is, um, these power nine principles were really those things that they had in common. Having easy, walkable, movable communities, that includes things like walkability, bikeability. Um, a, a, a emphasis on pedestrian modality, active transit, um, as you might have heard those words. Um, things also like a, a culture and environment around, um, purpose. People recognizing and knowing their purpose, giving back, volunteerism, being engaged in your community. Um, sometimes that comes from their faith-based, maybe all of the original Blue Zones were very strong faith-based communities. Uh, so driving a lot of purpose, both from their culture, um, and, and those types of practices. Um, powerful ways of downshifting, again, some cultural aspects of that, and, and, and a lot of environmental aspects of that. So downshifting, not just a two-week vacation where you're getting away from it all, but things like ample green space. Being able to just go get in a park and enjoy and relax, getting on a bike, going for a walk. It may be prayer, meditation, it could be things like taking a nap, but that you've got, you're setting up an environment that is conducive to. People taking time out and downshifting and being more present. Um, eat wisely, um, this is, you know, oftentimes people will think of Blue Zones as a diet and exercise company, we are not, we are not consultants in that space. But what we do look at is systems-level change that is going to help make these things, um, possible. So when we look at Eat Wisely, um, we certainly do practice plant-sland, that's not veganism or vegetarianism. But it's really optimizing the spaces for healthy foods to be more prevalent in the community across an entire demographic. So we're not focused on any one demographic over another, we really look holistically at the community and, and ask ourselves, is healthy food available? In schools, in work sites, at the corner market, in grocery stores, is it prioritized in terms of product placement? Are we partnering with local farms and agriculture to create sustainable food environments that make that possible to continue on? Are we incentivizing small farmers, growers, et cetera? So all kinds of things get wrapped up into Eat Wisely, but there are a few components that the original Blue Zones particularly had. Lots of gardening, lots of agriculture, um, they had cultural, environmental things that were conducive to eating less. Turns out if you eat a nutrient-dense meal, you overall eat less calories, but you also have things like smaller plate sizes, sitting down as a family. And eating together, not eating in front of the TV, these are all things that get at that eighty percent rule. And then wine at five, or what we often call friends at five, is around incentivizing people coming together, being together, like-minded colleagues, friends, et cetera. Around a meal, sometimes with a small glass of wine, or whatever your choice is, but it's really about connecting and creating community. That's what that, that part, um, element is about. And then finally, connect, really a thread that throws, goes through all of this is all of the original Blue Zones communities had a really strong sense of belonging. Their community was the right place for them, they felt strong and passionate about there be, that being their place. Um, and then likewise, they wanted to give back, they wanted to give back, they had pride in their community, they wanted to be a part of that community. Uh, and they felt like the community had their back, so really nice symbiotic, um, reciprocal relationship. Uh, loved ones first, again, having environmental housing, et cetera, that was conducive to keeping loved ones first, and what does that mean? Uh, you know, it's like having intergenerational homes in the original Blue Zones here in America, it may look like having the ability to have. And keep your loved ones close or take care of them. Um, positive pack, this gets at the nature of your three best friends, that power of connecting with those that you're closest to. Those that you can go to on a good day, those that you can go to on a bad day, but you also have the ability to influence health in powerful ways through those personal connections. Um, this is the power nine, we take, um, Blue Zones, what we've created is this idea of a life radius. Um, this is really about where do people in any given community spend the most of their time? The center of the community, it's probably in churches and schools and work sites. Um, who are the people they're spending their time with, and what is the policy that's underpinning, um, some of that? So we, um, have looked, um, at bringing things like the people connection element. Part of our model is to drive more intentional connection, and that is through inso- incentivizing individuals to take a personal pledge. Commit to doing one thing for one year that's gonna improve their health in their personal space. Bringing people together in what we call MOIs, borrowed from the Okinawan Blue Zone, so how do we bring groups of people together committed to doing healthy behaviors? Um, and then purpose, how do we help individuals across the community, working with partners such as your nonprofit, your faith-based, your work sites, your schools? To help people identify and articulate their unique gifts, talents, passions, um, that they really can put to work for themselves and their family. And the broader community. We also look, uh, again, at the places, so I've already mentioned these places over and over again, but they're so important, because this is where people are spending their time. So along with the people connection piece and how we address, um, just bringing them in as partners. We also want to look at their environments and how they're supporting well-being for the people that are in their space the most of the day. Um, and then finally, policy, um, and this really is policy with both a big P and a little p. It's not always something heavy-handed, it's honestly looking at what is happening right now in the jurisdiction of a community, whether that's county or city. Sometimes it involves state, um, and some of our larger projects have included state. But we're taking a look at what is currently in the planning proactively for city. Around some of these goals, how do we align some of the Blue Zones principles and best practices? I know, sure, many of you have heard of health and all policies, um, Blue Zones has worked a lot with city councils that are bringing health and all policies. To infuse some of these elements of Blue Zones along with that, so we're looking at, in creating walkable, bikeable communities. Places with optimized green space where people can congregate and come together and get outside. Um, trails, and you guys have got wonderful trails here in Temple, how do we connect more of those, activate those trail spaces, get more people out and on them? Um, and utilizing them, um, food environment I talked about already, um, and then alcohol and tobacco, especially when you're looking at. Issues of overprevalence of alcohol and tobacco, especially close to work, I mean, schools, young people where they're getting access. Um, can we work in those spaces to help improve overall, um, health and well-being? Um, as Michael mentioned, we've been through a process recently to go through an assessment focused on. Um, what is Temple today doing relative to those people, places, and policy? What are the strengths, what are the great things that have already happened, what are the things that are immediately in the pipeline next? Um, and then where are the opportunities or the challenges, where are things that have sort of been hard to move, hard to get partnership around? Hard to get buy-in, alignment, um, can we put together a plan around those factors? Um, so we've just completed that, we brought some elements around looking at data, current data that we had available. As well as working with Michael and team to say, is there a likelihood of a partnership here to help move this forward in the future? If the answer to that is yes, if, for example, the seat, city sees alignment in this process. If other stakeholders and partners, the schools, other corporate entities and business owners here in the community, other nonprofits. Healthcare, big one, sees alignment to this moving forward, um, we would start the next stage of this process with what's called foundation and planning. Um, and then that's a basically a nine-month process, and then we would go into transformation. In terms of, um, where we are today, here we are on the timeline, we're developing the report, it will be ready and available. Uh, we're shooting for May, we'll have an updated date for you soon on that. Um, and then we will be continuing to have these partnership discussions.
Margaret, what all, um, can we look forward to in that report, just quickly?
Yeah, well, I mean, all the things I talked about, we're.
Survey data, et cetera.
We're gonna, there's not new survey data in there, but what there is, is gonna be a report out of everything we've heard in focus groups. With some of those strategic leaders that have been invited to that process through the support of the steering committee for the Temple Biosciences and Health District. They've done a pretty good job of reaching across the community, so we're looking at the areas of built environment. We've put together what's called a policy scan, that is looking at all existing policies that the city has on the books today. We've also looked at your strategic plans and, um, development plans for environmental development, and have looked for strategic touchpoints. So you're gonna see a pretty broad and deep analysis of, of that work, um, in terms of built environment, food. Likewise, we've done a, 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 a look around the food environment, you'll see a report out on that, you'll see a report out on our conversations with schools. Work sites, et cetera, so it'll be, it's a pretty, right now, the last book that I had as they're drafting it is around a two-hundred-page report. And it's, it's pretty in-depth, so I'm looking forward to you all seeing that. So as I said, if we launch a project, we'll start with foundation and planning, a couple of things I'll just call your attention to here. We are not thinking that the assessment has analyzed every component of a Blue Zones project, I mean, of a, of the Temple community, it has not. We will have to do deeper research and deeper conversations at that point, at that juncture. We will also, um, begin recruiting a, a steering committee for that team, it will not be led by Blue Zones, this project will be led by Temple community. And the stakeholders that are, um, um, signed up to bring this forward, and then we would hire a team on the ground. And we would complete a new baseline measurement, that would, that measurement would be done through Gallup, our partner. Uh, and they would be looking to measure well-being, and I'll show you a snapshot of what that looks like here in a moment. So when we're talking about recruiting citizen-led committees, this is the structure, you have a steering committee at the top. We, the city absolutely has a seat on that steering committee, as well as all the partners that Michael's already mentioned, and others such as school superintendent. And others that would have to be in that driver's seat to make decisions around key components of that. And then you have these sector committees at the bottom that are really those people that are doing this work today, you've got nonprofit sectors, healthcare. Others that are on the ground doing some of this work today, we need to bring them together, so we're all aligned on the metrics, the goals, and the vision for making that change. And that, those chairs and co-chairs here serve on the. And that those chairs and co-chairs here serve on the leadership team. So here's the framework of the blueprint, that ultimate plan that will be moving this project forward. Um it is informed by um your community health needs assessment, all of the background data, our our assessment process. And that deeper discovery work that would happen at foundation and planning. Um and it's laid out like this. What are the goals agreed upon by the steering committee? The objectives, the strategies that are selected through a summit process of voting. And then what are the processes that we're going to take forward, the action plans? And then most importantly, what are the metrics? The metrics that are selected by the steering committee and all those that have input. To say, how are we making a difference in our, and and we're keeping the um, are we moving forward and making meaningful change? Here are some of the pillars. So when we say selecting metrics, you're going to select and um look at each of the areas of of policy, people and places. Minimum thresholds that have to be uh met there, community-selected metrics, what are the metrics that are most interest of the city? Of some of those other partners on the steering committee, they can be things like um increase in in visitor rate. I mean, I'm throwing out things that people have measured before, decrease in um BM um in BMI or obesity, decrease in rates of diabetes. Increase in housing availability or safe options for pedestrians. Those kinds of things can be community-selected metrics. And then the well-being metrics that get selected out of the well-being index oversample um that I will be sharing here in a few minutes. Um and you can look at all these. These are broken down from those sectors that that are kind of the minimum thresholds for that work. Um and many of you have seen this slide. These are from the communities we've been working with the longest and some of the impacts that they've had. Um I call your attention to things like forty million and follow-on grants. That's a question I get asked quite a lot. What does it mean to get a follow-on grant? It means that when Blue Zones comes in and we're aligned with the vision of the city. And there are plans or objectives put into that master plan, that blueprint document. Say one of them is to connect all the trails in Temple and to create and activate those spaces. Blue Zones would then partner to go and write and secure additional grants that would go to building that capital. So for example, one of the projects that I highlight here um is the project in Salinas. We kicked that project off in twenty nineteen. Um the city had already scoped out a plan to build a new soccer complex. They had actually already budgeted and had. Um funding for the soccer complex itself. Um but together with Blue Zones, what we identified is a way to even enhance that space even more by building. Uh pathways in and around that soccer complex for walking. We also connected it to an existing trail that sat right behind that soccer complex and optimized sort of the vending and. Um space for food, et cetera, um in that space. And we're able to bring in an additional eleven point five million dollars. So in that partnership, when we bring those follow-on grants, we typically are, those dollars go straight to whatever city or county that has jurisdiction. Um for those types of things. And we've done many other things. We've created downtown redevelopment in alignment with those. Whether that's optimizing new building space, putting in roundabouts, whatever the case may be, there's lots of work that gets built in that space. Um just really quickly, want to share, I've mentioned Gallup a few times. Um what are they? I really encourage you to go out and and look through and Google Gallup Wellbeing Index. And some of the data and the ways that they've analyzed their work. We bring them in because um they do a really good job of nailing down what is well-being. What are we talking about when we say improving well-being across a community? It's not just physical. It's purpose. Do residents feel like they like what they're doing every day? Are they social? Are we engaging more people socially and bringing them together? Financial, that's a big component. Um are are, do we feel like we have what we need to uh manage our uh life, reduce stress and increase security community? I'm increasing the number of people that just love where they live, that they have pride in their community. They're being more um good storage, volunteer, more civically involved. And then, of course, physical, all of those physical attributes of um health and well-being. Um and what we've seen in the communities that we've worked in is that you can see this nice kind of um of um. Relationship where you have an improvement in total well-being as defined by these five indices above. That you begin to see these types of community outcomes. In terms of community outcomes, there are literally hundreds that you could choose from. We have a pretty nice list of ones that are typical that other communities have chosen. But these are pretty typicals for what we see getting into year five, year six, year seven after having launched a um Blue Zones community. And just to talk to this a little bit, and because Gallup has been doing this for a long time. Um what they have seen, they put together a cohort study of ru- roughly sixteen thousand people. Is that when you have people that are fully thriving in well-being beyond just physical. You can have people that are fully in invested in their physical health. But if they're lacking these other components of well-being, um they're going to be less likely to be able to recover after hardship. A hardship like a natural disaster, a family, um you know, disruption or anything else that you might consider a hardship. Um versus those that are um thriving in all elements. And similarly, adaptability. And we saw this very clearly after COVID, and we actually did a white paper on comparing Blue Zones communities. Um to other communities with no intervention. And what you saw is that those communities, because they had an infrastructure and support. And they had been kind of proactively on the well-being, were very quick to adapt to a new way of life. Adapt to the new normal um that we all experience. And so just um a quick note, we have been measuring well-being for quite some time now. Um and what we've been able to see and to um look at in terms of the data. Is that when you reach a one point of increased sustained increase in well-being, that's not an easy place to get to. It takes, it takes a lot of work. It takes all sectors working together at the same time, not just one strategy. It takes all things coming together. You begin to see these kinds of outcomes, um like a one percent reduction in healthcare costs. Or a half percent reduction in lost productivity. But when you hit that ten-point sustain. That doesn't mean I get there this year and it's good. You need to get there and stay there for at least two years, three years. You begin to see the follow-on of reduced disease incident within your community. And we've been able to see that in some of our communities, like the beach cities, for example, where they have now reached a seventy-five percent reduction. Childhood obesity from their baseline starting point. Um and now have seen a lifetime reduction in cardiovascular risk as a follow-on um to that. And so we did some quick data. I'm just going to show you what we saw from Temple. This is some um happy to share a bigger report on this. But from the baseline data, and I'm going to share the baseline data that's being looked at here is Gallup Wellbeing Index data from twenty eighteen. So it's pre-pandemic. We would redo that oversample at the beginning of a project. And in all the communities where we've looked at data um for baseline, and they come back and have done a subsequent oversample. In these metrics, we have not seen a single community where anything had improved. If anything, it either had stayed the same or gone down as a result of kind of what everyone's been facing um these last few years. So when we look at Temple um and we compare it um to the state of Texas, and then we look and compare um Texas to the rest of the nation. Texas is already kind of lagging behind the rest of the nation as the average on the well-being. And then Temple is just a step behind the state of Texas. Um if we were to rank these, and I don't want you to get caught up on the the term MSA. These are Gallup-designated MSAs that are of like size to the the size of the city of Temple. You would find yourself ranked about a hundred and thirtieth out of a hundred and fifty-four MSAs. And the areas that came through in twenty eighteen as being the most concerning are the social element, finance, financial element. Um and then closely behind that, the physical and the purpose. And when we look at um just the word on the street, what people said when they were, when they answered the survey. Fifty percent on that top yellow bar were reporting dealing with stress daily, not having a good perception of their health. Not being proud of their community. And then, of course, not eating um sufficient fruits and vegetables, which gets at the nutrition component. And then at the bottom, you see some of the other metrics. Um and this is just um again, the twenty eighteen um report. But I wanted to share that as a snapshot and um give you plenty of time to ask questions. And I know Adrian and Mike will be joining me in that as well.
Council, anything for Margaret? Or Michael?
I had one, but how much do you, and I'll give an example and then ask a question. I would guess that probably over thirty percent of Temple citizens buy their groceries at Belton. How do you work with other community, with the communities that are that close, tight-knit with with us?
Yeah, I mean, that is a decision point. I will say, we have had in this process of engaging with stakeholders. There have been that some that have said they would want to include Belton. There are others that have said we want to focus on Temple and then perhaps expand. Um but in other communities that are this close and and share some of those jurisdictions, we have both worked with them, included them in the scope of work. And then there's others where we started the work and I'll I'll use Salinas as the uh example there. In Monterey County, they very much felt very strongly that the the sort of nucleus of the problem. That they were seeing with the diabetes rate of over fifty percent was really centered on Salinas. And they felt very strongly that they had to start with Salinas. And that needed to be their focus, and they really couldn't bite off any more than that. Um but after their first year of work, they actually expanded the project to about ten other communities across the full county of of um Monterey. With them being very different. So if you're familiar with Monterey County, you'll know there's the the kind of seaside, beautiful Monterey itself. Uh different demographic than what is in the south end of the county, which is very much migrant farm working, predominantly Hispanic, non-English speaking. And so when we expanded that, um it just took the additional work of bringing those stakeholders to the table, getting support. And getting the buy-in from those others. So in terms of where this project would go, that will be a Temple decision. Um and I would, you know, these guys will be the best and closest to that today where it would stand.
Yeah, you know, our our mandate is send a temple, it's THPD, but um. Melinda's Golden's been really engaged from BISD, as well as Bobby with BISD. And so, so it it already sort of over, you know, kind of blends out. Um and so, but it is a question in terms of scope of project and, you know, wait, Belton as a community participate or not. We just have to decide. It's a cost-benefit. Analysis. Yeah, maybe we're spinning ball as well.
No questions?
The two weeks ago, when there were a number of community meetings, three weeks ago, I did two or three of those. Very informative, interesting, different for sure. Buy-in is um. Like anything else, buy-in's a challenge.
Yeah.
Right? So what do you consider? What do you consider a successful program? When I, when I say that. But I mean, the the number of people in the community that participate. Um the, but you know, the number of individuals, the number of entities that participate, the overall um polling of the community. For the increase in well-being, what?
Yeah.
At the end of, this is roughly a five-year program, right? We kind of, I think our hands are held for five years and then after that, hopefully we're able to.
Yeah.
You know, to run with it.
Well, I think success is like a three, three things, right? First of all, um for me, success would be. Is the community successful in bringing folks together and feeling like they've made a transformational change, right? Did they meet their goals and objectives as being a partner, um all the partners together? That vision that oftentimes we're encouraging communities to build is that united vision. Do you see that you you either achieved that or made significant progress towards that vision? Success is also very much black and white in some respects of, did we meet these criteria? I mean, these are some of the process inputs to it. Um but we also have the metrics and the data. Um as as we looked at here, you're going to select metrics. We're not successful if we're not advancing or in showing improvement in those metrics that will be selected at that steering committee level. Um and so, I mean, that's, it it's a big deal for Blue Zones. Because if we're putting fees out to do this work, we're putting, we're putting twenty-five percent of those fees at risk. Saying, if we don't meet those metrics here and in the well-being index that that you, we don't know what you're going to choose. Um if we don't meet those metrics, then twenty-five percent of the fees that you, that we're charging for this work, you're not going to pay. We're going to give that right back to you. Um so we're very highly incentivized um to meet those goals and be successful in that respect. But again, we could be very successful in these kind of black and white, process-driven, metric-based things. But if you as a city do not feel like you've advanced on that vision or come together and experiencing a transformed environment around well-being. I would say they're still falling short of what success is. That that, they have to go hand in hand.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you guys. Thanks for your participation in the process, which many of you have dedicated.
Thank you guys. It's good to see you.
Yes, very good to see you.
You're current man. Next, we'll receive a legislative update from uh Daisy Hawkins who brought.
I brought cookies, remember?
Did you not disappear these?
Close your eyes.
We're gonna actually, sorry to interrupt. We did actually bring some of these magazines. This is. A showcase of the Blue Zones.
You appreciate that.
I'm waiting to see what's in the box.
The box is chocolate chip cookies from uh Butcher Baker.
No, I shouldn't send you that video.
You're already worth them.
This is what is coughing me.
You should have a cookie.
Have a cookie and kind of had a good day. So I.
Temporary totally crap.
Yes. Wait until they left.
But we are also by try, uh you know, patron, patronizing our local Butcher Baker. We are um, you know, participating in a sense of community and, right?
By the way, Butcher Baker, the um, for Easter, we got a big turkey from that. It's not dried out. It's juicy.
Everything I've tried from Ben has been.
Oh, we thought it did.
Yeah.
I I took uh you at farm now.
It was good. Yes, it was good.
If you brought us some local wine, we'd be following.
There you go. Yeah. It's like, I needed to hear that Shaq, well, getting together with my three best friends and. Uh having a good one, quite perfect. That's what I needed to, needed to have about.
I understand what you're saying. I still feel like I would have liked. See, that's very different than saying, hey, this person told me, I don't want this shirt today.
If you want some good news, I thought you might have today.
I do want some good news, because I don't think Daisy's going to give me any.
No good news. Well, wait, my first one, well, I have a couple of slums that have tiny little bits of um. Good news are right at the end of the tunnel. That. Good news are right at the end of the tunnel. That, my first slide is that countdown's on thirty-one days. Well, when I did this, I was assuming I would be presenting a little bit earlier than now, so. The minutes are off, um, maybe closer to thirty-one days and nine hours like dots until the end of session. So we're getting there. Um, there are a few deadlines that are coming up um that. Will really make a difference in the process and what actually ends up happening. The first one being May thirteenth is the deadline for the last house, house calendar to be printed, so um after that. All um, house bills that have not been calendared are effectively dead. May twenty-fifth um is a deadline for any senate bill that needs to be heard in the house to be countered. After that, all senate bills not calendared are again uh effectively dead. Um, so hopefully there will be a lot on the cutting room floor. There will be a lot on the cutter, cutting room floor, you know. Um, there were so many bills passed, it's just sort of a numbers game there.
There used to be a lot of recovery.
Yes, there does. Um, so um recently, um members of senate leadership. Um, so uh the mayor and Bran and um David Olson um. All went down to Austin and testified before the senate water agriculture and rural affairs committee. And they went on April twenty-second to testify in support of senate bill twenty-eight eighty-five by Senator Flores and that. Is um relating to the use of reclaimed water that has been treated. To meet certain standards as part of an aquifer storage and recovery project. So that is a bill. Um, that we are very happy that Senator Flores has filed on our behalf. Um, because it will help us in our ASR, ASR project. Um, good news, we found out yesterday that bill was voted out of the senate and has now been received by the house, so. Um, we have some, yes, it's very good news, it's very good news.
Thirty-one to that.
Is it gonna be an issue because it doesn't have a house companion?
Well, we're hoping to um, you know, remedy that.
May twenty-sixth because it it is a senate bill without a house.
Yes. But hopefully.
No, 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 they can't, but if if you had a, if you had a house companion and a senate companion, they run concurrently at the system and then they need at the top where you're. Exactly the same, you go to the governor, you go to a conference committee to um, you know, work out the differences or one or. Or the other chamber and uh basically just concurs with the others' uh differences. If you only have one bill, it has to go up this process first and then up this process, it can't run.
Does it have to be get on the cal, senate bill's gotta get on the house calendar now and that hasn't happened?
You gotta go to the committee, get heard in committee, get voted out of committee, get on the calendar, get to the floor. Get heard and read, get passed, and then if it does all of that before signed, I then, you know. We can resume the governor sign it, but if it doesn't get out of committee by May twenty-fifth and on the calendar by May twenty-fifth. So both out of the committee and out of the calendar committee by May twenty-fifth and it's dead.
So, um, both of our house reps. I wouldn't say they declined, they did not carry it forward, so we had to go to the senate. Is there a couple of questions? Number one, is there any reason to believe that that our reps won't carry it forward?
Um, we are, I I actually had a coffee yesterday with um Jessica Dean, who is the district director for Representative Buckley. And um, so I reignited that conversation um and shared the community letter of support. And so that is the direction that we're trying to um go, see if um Representative Buckley will pick that bill up for us. Um, and speaking with Fred Shannon, um our lobbyist, he has some other um alternatives on the. The committee that this bill will end up at in the house, um that we could also reach out to. Um, to carry the bill that if Senator, I mean Representative Buckley declines to do that.
You. You think another rep's office, if you had a connection there, or would that be considered um out of line?
I think um the best.
Does that then casks, you know, some barriers on that bill, that you couldn't get your own two reps to carry it forward?
Not necessarily. Yeah, not necessarily.
Now here, because uh our, one of our reps, Chair Buckley, is the um. He's on the committee that it would be heard before, it would be ideal if he would um. Man, he doesn't have to do anything. Nobody has to carry it, it's a senate bill. But just to um help us to. Go for a hearing, use any influence he has, probably just get it, get it to for a hearing and live it along. But he's not gonna be filing, nobody else has to. Care, carry the bill.
Move forward, lift up, whatever the rest.
Yeah, that's why it's helpful to be able to have. People who are infinitely familiar with the system, be able to help you. The other option that we have, you know, although it's not our, it's not the best option, but the other option that we have is to. We've also identified any other bills that this one would be what an alter may do, that it could potentially. Get um, you know, amended, uh another bill is another bill that's covering the same, a similar enough subject matter. So that you can make an argument that this topic is germane to that bill, you can um seek to get the bill that's moving. Amended so that you can have your topic concluded as a bill that that's moving forward. So we've also identified the bills that are. Germane to this issue, so if the, in the event that one of those starts. You know, outpacing us and and that looks like the better option, we can explore that as well. And then the other thing to keep in mind on this particular piece of legislation is that our goal here is to request. Is to have the state legislature um basically um. Dictate to TCQ that they they must set rules that would allow permanent this type to be issued. But TCQ has within their power the ability to set the rules outside of legislative. They they don't need a legislative authority to do that, they can do it on their own. This is simply telling them that it's so important to the legislator that the legislature is telling them they must do it. Versus they already have been told that they can do it. So we have received some really positive engagement from the governor's office. And from um some of the um folks that have um that that have uh. That weren't close to the TCQ and have input into their operations, so it is possible that even if the bill doesn't move forward. That we um still see TCQ work with us to um promulgate the rules that we're asking them to promulgate.
I heard, I don't remember if you told her somebody else that was there that didn't, one of the reps or senator or something, basically kind of tell TCQ. Why we have to do this, shouldn't that be, shouldn't they already have?
Senator Perry provided some pretty direct comments on the record to TCQ, so that's helpful.
This is the, the two reps from TCQ, one sitting across the table from the other, said, well, all it would really take was for my department to talk to her department. And I, and I think that we can probably figure out how to talk to each other. That's basically what she.
Kind of interesting.
Um, okay, so the last part of the presentation is really just talking about the bills of note that are moving through the process. Related to community advocacy or ability to be able to hire uh lobbyists. Um, senate bill nineteen um is passed the senate and has been referred to the House State Affairs Committee. Um, there's another one, um, House Bill seven fifty-five by Spiller, which is probably um. Would be a better option I think for us. Um, it it doesn't, it allows um for. It's really more about um, that bill is really seeking more about transparency around. Um, what we're, what we're doing and hiring lobbyists and um like they can't lobby for property tax rates and some things like that, so. Um, it doesn't um out now take that ability away from cities to be able to hire outside lobbyists, so. Um, that's another one that we're watching and it's pending in House State Affairs. Um, on property tax, um House Bill nine, so there's House Bill nine and then Senate Bill thirty-two, which both deal with. Um exemptions for appraised value of business personal property. Um, and so the um House Bill version is passed the house and the Senate Bill version is passed the senate. You can see they're very, they're very different in um their approach and that the House Bill is. Um, the exemption would be up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars while the Senate Bill is twenty-five thousand dollars and so. At some point, those two, um, you know, they're gonna have to pick which one or conference committee or something, um, how how that's gonna work, but. Um, they are moving, both are moving through the process, Senate Bill ten twenty-five and House Bill fifty-four forty-six. Um, that uh really is just about ballot language and it's saying that um they're. Gonna require um the notice of this is a tax increase on um the top of any um ballot increase, uh ballot that increases taxes. Senate Bill ten twenty-five has been reported um from House Ways and Means and House Bill uh fifty-four forty-six. Also reported out of um House Ways and Means, right? They're both moving, moving through the process.
On Senate Bill ten twenty-five, this is a tax increase, and I'm like, you're intimately familiar with this with the Belton bond election, right? In Belton, um their their last bond election, they they advertised no rate increase. And they were um going to play, the the plan which ended up ultimately passing was that they would then pay for whatever was on the bond with growth. Um, and I guess, you know, uh, was it assessed value also? I mean, no, no tax rate increase? I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, not I guess what I'm asking, I'm telling you what I'm asking, that when it says this is a tax increase, I mean, there are, there are. There are lots of definitions of a tax increase, right? It can be increased in trade value, it can be increased in the actual tax rate.
The ballot that says zero percent had that language on there, it was a school that already had, I guess cities don't, schools had it then.
Yeah.
So it says zero percent, and then right below it, this is a tax rate increase or a tax. It was really hard to.
Well, yeah, and and that's, that's my point, is it's extremely hard to get across.
Yeah.
And and, you know, in many ways, I think some of the um around this particularly, the the folks in Belton. You know, kind of got out that this is, this is smoking mirrors, right? This is shell game, because there's no way you can not have a tax increase and pay for something that you don't have now.
I was invited to a, a small group meeting with the B I S D people there, they're not told, don't ever, ever do. A zero percent tax rate increase as long as that's gotta be on there.
Right. So, is there, all that to say? Is there, is there something in in either the senate bill or the house bill that that defines what a tax increase is?
I will have to get back to you on that, because I'm not positive on either one of those two, I don't, I don't remember. Yeah, well, and that's, that's a lot of times too, um, when bills are going through, that's a lot of the questions that we have on it, it's like. It's ambiguous, the bill doesn't tell you, so, you know, whether it it, T T B D, right? Later on, they're gonna figure it out.
I think that's by design.
I do too, man.
Well, we know that zero is, and I can't see anybody having a bond election for a negative.
Right, number, so they've been overcharging me all these years.
And I'm not, I haven't read through that totally, but. When I think about like on our no new revenue tax rate. Yeah, there's all, all kinds of things that go into calculating that rate. You get to exclude this, you get to exclude that, or you include this, you adjust that. So when, when it says an increase in taxes, I think if you, you have one more dollar. It's gonna increase your quote taxes, one more dollar, then you have to do that, and it could either be the rate or the value that's. Or both that are increasing.
Right.
So.
But if the value's gonna increase whether you have election or not.
Right. But.
Unless you.
There's, that's where they're saying you could get it down to the new revenue rate, or anyway, I don't wanna confuse you more, because it can. But I hear what you're saying.
I think, I think that's their intent, this.
But sometimes you can add additional language if the bill doesn't say that you can't, like you can include this and only this. Because I know that's happened with budgets, you have to include that this is a tax increase language or whatever. But then you can also include another sentence after that kind of clarifying.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Um, and then last up there, Senate Bill twenty-five twenty-nine, um, about. Um, sixty percent of council must approve any um geo-bond. Seventy-five percent of council must approve tax rate exceeding the new revenue rate, and that one's been voted out of the Senate Government Committee. Um, the big bill that we've been working on for the last um really week and a half, I guess, um is House Bill nineteen. Um, by Representative Meyer, um, it has a lot of things and it's a really bad bill, sort of a nuclear option related to um debt. Uh, some of the major provisions of the bill are there listed below, uh twenty percent cap on the annual property tax-supported debt service. Um, restrictions on funding source for non-voter-approved debt, mandatory November elections for bonds and tax rate increases. They really are trying to get it, uh get the May election date eliminated. Um, there's a number of bills related to that, but that one is pending right now in House Ways and Means even. Um, it's, we've been working on, like I said, we've been working on that for the last week and a half or so, um. The uh Bran actually just shared um some, some information that Tracy got, that there is another bill. Um, what is it, ten, Senate Bill ten twenty-four? Senate Bill ten twenty-four that the, that there um.
I'll wait on that.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
I'm sorry, I first would I have received it, but now I'm not, I'm just really late here.
Okay, so that one is pending in House Ways and Means and we're, we're really trying to um. Hopefully get some um better amendments, can we substitute something to make that a little bit more workable for, for us?
Wasn't that a big victory on this week that it didn't get moved to vote to because of all the opposition?
Yes.
Which is a good.
That the layer that look like that may actually.
It won't cut well.
Or or in this version of, there'll be a modified version.
That's the wrong one.
Why are they trying to remove a May election date and consolidate everything to November? What's the reasoning for that?
I think it's because uh more people come out to vote in um November election timeframes and they want more people voting. Um, because, you know, historically you don't have a a real big turnout from New York. And so I.
Eighteen thousand people voting in District Three in uh this last election. The presidential election and um fourteen thousand total. And in the previous two elections that weren't presidential elections, less than a thousand.
But the same thing happens in November in times of non-presidential elections, I don't necessarily think it's. It's a noting where it's May, it's what's on the ballot, because if you have.
Well, but then every other year you have.
If you have constitutional amendment, then you have a very similarly low turnout in November, so.
Most every four years, they can take a whack at it.
When it's on there with the president, you're gonna get a lot of voters that have no. I'm saying on it, no tax increase, you have fourteen thousand people, so no, no, I mean, but it says, say, you know, this is a tax increase, I don't know.
So that's the bad bill, we're working on that one.
That's a, that's a big deal, that bad, 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 bad.
Um, and then for land use and density, lot size, um and then ADUs, we've talked a lot, I think, in my last few. Um, updates about these, and it's like fifteen, um, just the, I'm lot bill, um. If we did get um some relief in that it's bracketed, it's been bracketed to thirty of a hundred and fifteen thousand. And counties over three hundred thousand, so that um eliminates us from that, but it has passed the senate and. Get from the House plan, resource management committee. Um, so that one's getting close, Senate Bill six seventy-three, uh which allows ADUs by right, has passed the senate. Um, and it, I think, was set to be heard in the House Land and Resource Management Committee today. Um, mixed use and multifamily residential development, Senate Bill eighty-three. Um, that's passed the senate and it's pending in the House Land and Resource Management, Senate Bill eight fifty-four. Um, it is um on the senate intent calendar. It's companion, House Bill thirty-one seventy-two is pending in the House Land and Resource Management, so there is some things moving. Um, there is, well, there's been a pretty big, uh pretty heavy land um use. Um, uh concentration this year, but these are some of the ones that are are moving that we're really watching, so ETJ's. Senate Bill twenty-five twenty-two, five, five, bed and court, which um. Uh, makes it uh hard for us to have any kind of regulations um in ETJ's, pending in the senate local government committee. This annexation. Um, in ETJ's pending in the Senate Local Government Committee, disannexation. Um, I actually just got a um. Uh, alert on Senate Bill eighteen twenty-four, um that's been placed on the Senate Intent Calendar. Um, that is. Disannexation bill, which essentially um allows um someone to petition. Um, to annex from the city regardless of, you know, how long they, how long since they've been in the city. Um, if the city does not provide water and wastewater to their area or to them. If that service is provided in other areas of the city. So that is.
Of the city or the ETJ?
Of the city.
So, so this is, this is concerning because taken into consideration Lakewood, which um who built. Um, intentionally using septic systems. Uh, if this passes as is, which is uh looking. Like it, to be honest with you, then any one of those houses could choose to disannex from the city, any one of them.
So what do we do? Not maintain the street from their house and skip it or?
Well, the street stays in.
Yeah, that's.
So they're, they, they, they connect it to the water system, the street stays in the city, it's just their property that that comes out, so it's.
The water.
Services, services without payment. Remains, I mean. I, I think that.
Maybe you're just not getting it.
I don't know what to say. You know, if this, this one will be. That there's like white wood, um ninety-three, you know, some of those subdivisions on ninety-three. And and what it does to our development community in the future is unless we. We, we won't be able to allow any developments to move forward that have, that don't have sewer, residential or commercial.
Yes, like who? Paxton and Craddock doesn't.
If you need a story behind that particular bill, it's a um, and Stacy, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a. An area in Austin, Lake Austin, it's like super.
People have.
Helicopters.
They have helicopters landing on their homes.
They have helipads there.
Yeah.
At each individual residence and they, they wanted to disannex from the city. So they, they have had this bill sponsored on their behalf.
It is moving forward.
And we can't get an A S R.
It's passing. Go, go back, um Stacy.
I mean, that might, uh it is, it's, it's going, it's got out of the House Committee, it's. On the Senate intent calendar. I mean, so it would be the full, you know, it would be Brett Buckley, you know, it would be. It would be the time. I hate to keep ringing the bell for our business community, but this one, you know, we, if we want to keep. Lakewood in the city of Temple, we will have to um. Try to get them to either kill this one or bracket it up to deal with Austin.
He has taught me enough. I want to keep them in the city for one, but I really, really, really don't want to provide streets and trash and every police to. People who aren't paying city taxes.
Well, you don't have to, they don't, if they call nine-one-one, they will not get a police officer or fired.
Play that up.
Uh, no cheap and like stuff like that, but if they're not paying for it.
I mean, that's ridiculous.
Just pay the neighboring houses that are in the city down so they don't catch.
Been done before.
Less capability because of bonds may go away, less revenue. Because of things like that. I mean, it just, at some point, at some point, it's. It's it's impossible to encard yourself in city. Gathering of homes.
Just eat your, keep eating your cookie. That's the only good thing for today. So uh for related to permitting, so um House Bill twenty-three and Senate Bill fourteen fifty. Um, they basically say that an applicant can request for a third party review. Um, and there have been a few improvements um to this bill because it was quite a bit worse. Um, but as it's moved through the process, there's been a few improvements. I mean, it's still not great, but um one being third party reviewer has to follow all city regulations. Um, the city can rescind the approval um of the, of the um third party reviewer. The city can still conduct an inspection at the end before issuing their um C O. And um one thing that was completely kind of left out of the bill is um. Who bears liability if there's something, you know, goes wrong based on, you know, the review? Um, so that's been established that the liability um is specifically on the third party reviewer. So. Um, those are a few improvements that that have made it marginal and better. But that um the House Bill has passed the House um and the Senate Bill has passed the Senate, so that's moving forward. Um, for super preemption, um.
I'm sorry, is there anything in there that is um like, for example, um if. I'm not saying they would do this, but uh like, for example, W B as a developer has an engineering company that's a subsidiary of them. Is there anything preventing the person who's seeking the flat from approving their own flat? Are there engineering companies?
I don't know that because I'm thinking that right now. They're relying on the fact that good engineer has the seal it and wouldn't. Risk his license, but. So super premption expanding on um last session's Debbie Starville, House Bill twenty-one twenty-seven. Um, this adds um some other codes, um the election, some parts of the other, of other codes, the election. Uh penal and health and safety codes. So that's passed the Senate. Um, for elections, there are Senate Bill twelve oh nine by Hughes, which again, so another bill trying to eliminate the May election date. That's passed the Senate and has been referred to the House Elections Committee and then Senate Bill five oh six by Beddencourt. Um, says that the Secretary of State must review certain petition um for initiated ballot propositions. That's also passed the Senate. For utilities, um telecommunications, line communication costs, we talked about this um the last time. And that's where the city can require um a telecommunications company to recode relocate lines, but it would be at our cost now. Um, so House Bill forty-two seventy-two um is pending in the House Subcommittee on Telecommunications. Water infrastructure and um funding, this is uh actually a good bill, Senate Bill seven um from Senator Perry creates the new water supply. Um, protects this fund and there's two billion dollars for water infrastructure projects. That's passed the Senate's pending in House Natural Resources Committee. Um, related to water late fees, um. Uh, House Bill twenty-eight sixty-seven by Gates caps city water late fees based on the length of the delinquency. That has been reported from the House Natural Resources Committee, so that is moving forward.
That, what's our policy on that now? Does it keep increasing the longer, the longer?
It's based on the amount of the view.
Sending to the bill versus like the town?
Um, Open Government, Open Meetings Act, uh saying that um House Bill fifteen twenty-two. Says that governmental bodies have to provide free business days notice for all public meetings. That's passed the House. Um, Public Information Act.
Has just been the rules and not do it.
Yeah, they, they, they do that, okay. Um, House Bill forty-two nineteen um says that uh the. We must notify requesters uh when there is no responsive documents. Um, I think it's within ten day, ten business days or something like that. Um, and that the Attorney General will investigate um and can require extra training on the Public Information Act and things like that. That's on House Calendar for, well, was on House Calendar for the thirtieth. I think it got, um, I don't know that they got to that one yesterday. Um, because what uh what's been happening, there's been a little bit of gamesmanship going along, going on in the House floor and then. Um, there was one whole calendar that got, the local calendar, I think they got pushed um to a another day. And so it's just, they're backed up on what they're hearing um on the House floor. And so now I think they're hearing every day somewhere between a hundred and thirty. And a hundred and fifty bills a day. Um, and so it's, it's really uh that's created a backlog. Um, for city administration, um granting some local food and agricultural regulations, Senate Bill ten. Uh, one thousand and eight, and then House Bill twenty-one fifty-six uh preamps local food service and health and sound regulations. Um, so that's been reported out of the House State Affairs Senate, um and then that House Bill. Um, twenty-six is on the House Calendar for um today, the first, yeah, it's up for tomorrow. House Bill twenty-eight forty-four preamps local food truck regulation, so it essentially sets up a state regulatory process and the state will get the. Permit fee for that. Um, and uh that's been voted out of House State Affairs. And then for city finance and economic uh development, House Bill fifty-two sixty-seven imposes expenditure limits on. All cities, uh the city can only exceed within elections. So not only are they trying to. Um, you know, get us on the revenue side, but also on the expenditure side. We talked about that one the last time. That has been voted out of the House. And that's all my good news to.
But so like even on the.
Forty-two nineteen, mind me, that one.
But the impact on the food, right? Moving the, moving the permitting process to the state. People are driving their food truck to the state, to Austin, right? So they're gonna probably require local people to do the inspection. It's in the feedings day. Or like. Your, your license, you know, your tags for your car, right? You don't have to get inspected anymore, but they still collect.
Yeah.
That is a tax increase. Wow. Okay. You're free to leave, Stacy. You may go now.
I may go.
To your office.
Please go. That's good because everybody that I've been trying to get on the phone today while I was making that presentation.
Of course, they do. Thank you for your good work. I didn't know she's wearing a blue dress today.
Yeah, for the blue.
All right, very good. It is. I know, because I'm, if they keep this up, I'm turning. There you go. Everybody's blue. All neutral. Don't know where you're going. Well, I think, you know, they, they keep.
Crystal over there in blue. Look at this.
It's because we're tired of the the reds in Austin. If they keep it up, at some point, it won't fit there, right? And it'll be full blown the other way.
It happens all in one election and.
Yeah, that's true.
I did want to say that I ran into Milton Hensley, Brandon's favorite.
Yeah.
Guy.
He's just in life, by the way, so you'll know.
Okay.
Um, he couldn't, he couldn't have been neither. He was just so happy to to see me. It makes me feel so good to know that he was so happy to see me. And he lives across the hall from my mom at Garden and State. And I walked in the other day, there was an Elvis impersonator there and a place was, and Milton me right up front and he was loving it. So it's just really sweet and he can tell all my friends hello. Not the store to the, the, yeah, he wants to go to the freezer.
So he may just.
But only aha.
He was really, he was really for the Economic Development Agreement to incentivize the new freezer warehouse. And I told him, I'll try to get you a tour.
Yeah.
I need to make, I need to.
That's good.
Make that work while there's still time.
Yeah.
I thought I met Jack Morris's um visitation, because he was leaving, I patted him on the back, melted. Little guy is so skinny. You can feel his spine down. He was a suit coat. Oh, yeah. But that, you know, right, Blue Zones, that's why he's, you know, he's living by the eighty percent rule and all of that. Good, sweet guy, big skin. All right, very good. So it is about fifteen minutes until four. I will close the uh the regular workshop and we will move into. We are taking a break. Yes, I will now move into executive session. Thank you, Alan, for coming by. We freeze your taxes.
I know.
On the side you live on.
The center.
All right. So we will receive a brief briefing from City Attorney regarding update to ending their contemplated litigation. City Council entering for executive session. settlement offer regarding claim pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one oh seven one. And will conduct a private consultation with attorney on the matter in which the duty of the attorney. To the city, to the council, under the effective disfined rule of federal conduct, state bar of Texas. Clearly, it fits with the Texas Local Government Code, chapter five five one. It's now twelve minutes in total.